October sometime, I think. We have to use that money up, but we have to turn it back in. Now, fire departments already provided me receipts for stuff they've used. I have to reimburse them. We have money there to use for the COVID stuff. So, once you guys will be aware of there, and if we don't use it, we just turn it back in.
I have an update for you on that as well. The US Capitol, both the Senate and the House, both are saying that they're going to approve the ability to use the CARES Act money for income replacement. But, it's, they have to settle this entire second CARES Act thing, which is the $1,200 for homeowners and whatever. Until they settle that, there won't be a determination of what exact requirements are under the CARES Act. So Tracy, what I'm being told by both Sher Brown's office and Mike Turner's office, which are opposite, you know, political party people, is that they're going to extend the deadline for the CARES Act expenditure. Because the US government hasn't decided, that's who the money came from. They haven't decided the criteria for what to spend it on. Income replacement could be many things. If you go into compensate for road funds in this, or loss because of lack of gas tax. If you go into possible salaries for your staffing, where you had to have employment limits for staffing. But, again, the parties are fighting over the whole big package called Patriot Act, or you've heard names to it. Until they settle that, we need to wait. Because if we can use this money, it would be a tremendous shock to the arm for the township. Beyond, beyond the chief and the fire departments.
It still has to be, that's how they relate, it has to be justified related, that this, these incidents related to this COVID stuff. We can use it for those things, but it has to still be related.
As of today. But as this new, the new bill that they're trying to iron out is going to have different stipulations on it. So, we're watching it. But for now, Tracy's right. She has a receipt for what the fire department has spent towards protecting their staff. That's definitely a reimbursement that you ought to make.
There is one issue, I don't know if this is due, no, this is over. Okay, last meeting and the meeting before. Well, the meeting before last, Mr. Mann didn't receive his folder, because it was done that day of the meeting, and he didn't go up to the office and get it. I went up to the office today, and the folders weren't done because the printer was down. She was waiting on a guy to come fix it. I didn't know when he was coming, so I just went home. I have stuff to do. I get an email, a copy of the email of Mr. Wolf. Says, "Mr. Wolf, for your request, all folders for the meeting are ready for you, except Tracy's." Tracy, this email proof, proof that your folder is in your mailbox. Folders from Mr. Wolf, as noted, were carried to the meeting. Trustee McLaughlin, trustee McGuire, trustee Mann, Chief Lutz, John Calligan, Tony McKee, Steve Wolf, and Captain Andy Flatt. Why was my folder put in the mailbox? Why couldn't that be carried? You had 10 folders.
We can make that change. I was told by Adrian that you said you wanted it. So, that's why she put it in.
No, this says per, this email says per your request. It says per your request, Mr. Wolf.
No, I've never requested.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm reading what the email says.
So Tracy, do you want it carried here?
I would appreciate it, on the days that they don't get done on time, and I'm up there, you know I come up there. They weren't done. I can't sit there all day waiting on a folder. I have other things I have to do.
Okay, so what I asked is, would you like it carried to the meeting?
Yeah, it's been in the folder till the meeting.
Okay, we'll do it. No problem.
Under our own business, I'd like to talk about legal fees. And I don't have the resolution in front of me. Back when the COVID started, there was a meeting, and we were told because of the Steve Roush deal, or the no-legal matter, that we need to hire an outside legal firm. Nathaniel stated that he was working from home, wasn't very much available. So, we did hire Sher, Doc, and Turner. And the resolution stated for 60 days. That was over like June 6th or 7th. We continue to use them. That's not the point of the conversation. The point of the conversation is, we have over $11,200 in legal fees with this outfit. And the budget has $1,000 for that kind of legal fees, and I'm, where's $9,500 for the previous bill with ICE number. It's just, how are we going to pay that bill? We only had $1,000 in a budget for it. And why are we continuing using an outside legal firm when we have Nathaniel? We're just throwing money in this outfit. I think part of the problem is because, when I've spoken to Alex Hale on the phone, you know, he does not require to include me in communication that Mr. McGuire and Steve Wolf are having with him on a regular basis, and the time clock's going. He doesn't have to include me, whereas Nathaniel would copy me on the emails. So, we doing this so we need trustee McLaughlin out of it? But why are we spending a level of $11,000 in legal fees? Any answers?
You seem to be the only one with holding the copy of the bill.
I'm sorry?
You seem to be the only one holding the copy of the bill.
Mr., everybody gets copies of us, then Steve has the copy, and everybody's on, and all the trustees are on the copy. So, he may be holding it because he printed it out. If you don't look at your emails and don't print it out, there's nothing we can do about that. We can't make you read your email.
And on public record, I'm not going to be out the exact deal, the details, but you know, the item, item I fill, 161 and the rears, and it just, all the telephone conversations, and Steve and Jim's name is time and time and time against, mentioned in here. And I'm just curious, why are we not using Nathaniel? Or why are we using, spending all this money that we don't have on outside legal fees? Especially when the resolution said it was supposed to stop June 6th or 7th. So, here we go again. When the audit comes around, we're going to get slapped. Any comments? Okay, we have a Bueller Asphalt Blacktop Remedy Company is billed, that has not been paid, and I'm sure I've been accused of not holding it up. And that's not the truth of the matter. Truth of the matter is, we actually had a resolution that gave it to another contractor, and for some reason, we discussed before, he won't take, he wouldn't work for us. And I spoke to him personally, and he reinstated why he won't work for us. So, how we gave it to Bueller Asphalt Blacktop, whatever, without it going through the resolution, is kind of fishy in the first place. How did we get a contract of $125,000, and we awarded it to somebody, they didn't take it, and not in a public meeting, but behind closed doors, the decision is made to give it to somebody else? So, then the problem comes up in paying the bill. And again, and again, Tracy's given, given bill numbers, payment numbers, account code numbers, that are, don't have enough money in to pay it, to pay it. Is that correct, Tracy?
So, let me clarify that.
Yes.
It's been taken out of several different codes, and, but the issue is not taking out several different codes. The issue is, on the purchase order that was written, this first of all, it's not signed by trustee. And secondly, it's telling me to transfer money out of one line item, I mean, actually a fund code, to another fund code, and that's changing the budget. In order to change the budget, you have to pass a resolution, because the trustees approved the budget. When you transfer something out of, on one to, on one fund code to another, you have, that's changing the budget. That has to be reported, and has to be documented. So, I cannot pay the bill until a resolution is written that trans, that tells, the trustees approved that that transfer that changed to the budget. That transfer can remain, which is a change to the budget. So, that's why that bill can't be paid.
How exactly did the, who's going to do the work change? I called Bueller Blacktop, and they stated that Steve Wolf and Jim McGuire gave them permission to proceed. Is that true? Do you guys do that, within a public meeting? How did that transition, change from J and A construction to Bueller Asphalt? Again, no answer.
I'm not here to feed your sound bites, trustee McLaughlin. So, moving along.
Steve, do you have, oh, that's not any business. Any more old business, anybody? Jim? Steve, got any old business you want to talk about? Tracy?
Not any old business, no.
Okay, on the new business. On the agenda, on the new business, is First Baptist Church of Ridgewood Heights, 100th Year Proclamation. Somebody want to talk about that?
Yes, we received a phone call from the pastor, as well as layman, together on a conference call from that church, saying that they would like a proclamation for their church for the 100th year anniversary. So, in your package, you all have copies in your package of the resolution, but in front of you is the nice certificate that you're holding. They said that you're free as trustees or the community to come down on next Sunday, when they're having their event. But, we've done this many times before, including Mr. Gooding and many others. We've honored the churches in the area when they've had a special event. So, that's what that's about. So, you have to approve that in a regular meeting, so, you know, but I wanted to talk about it in the work session, but.
Are they going to have anybody show up tonight?
Here? No, they're not.
Okay, any other new business? Tracy, you have anything?
Yes, I don't even know how to approach this, but this goes back to the bills again. But here, right here in front of me, is a stack of bills I've received over the last three weeks. It takes me almost a whole week to get, and I get stacks like this from Mr. Wolf. Takes me a whole week to sort them out. He has Adrian scan them in, and email them to one, whatever folder he gives us, she scans them on the one, so I didn't have to go through that folder. Then she emails them, and I send you all a copy. And then I have to go through that folder and sort them out. It looks, the folder looks like somebody dropped it on the floor. I mean, and so I have to sit there, find the purchase orders, and match the invoices, and sort that all out, and get it all together. So, that takes me almost a week to do. So, I got, last time I got 24 of them, about 17, 24. And then the very last time, I got 12. So, within the last three weeks. And previously, I mentioned I had 56 of them. At least that's the way it was numbered. So, this is the way it's coming, and it's just, it takes me like forever to get, it takes me the whole weekend to get this done, to try to get it done. And now, on top of these, on top of that, there's purchase orders, I mean, not purchase orders, line items, there's codes that are money being charged, but there's no, no money on the line item. And so, I can't even write the bill because there's no line item to charge it to. So, I have an issue with getting bills with no line items to charge it to. So, I get an email from Mr. Wolf, that he goes, Dear Fiscal Officer, I kindly request a work session with you and others to try to resolve the issues with trustees as soon as possible. These issues cannot be solved over the internet. I saw an email come across from you, Mr. McLaughlin, asking for a special meeting to do a discussion on this.
Yes, I did.
And it was supposed to be like Monday or Tuesday of last week? And it never happened. So, now he's asking for a work session. Okay? I'm, and then it says, "I want to meet in person with Mr. Mann and any others to resolve any invoices that are outstanding. You keep referring to more and more of this happening, so I'm here to resolve the issue. I am kindly asking for your cooperation." First of all, Mr. Wolf is the issue. Okay? So, how can he say, I mean, I don't know how I can work with it. He is the issue. I'll give you one example. We did have a meeting, I can't remember the date, but it was supposed to have been at 9:00. It was right after his vacation. His printer had run out of printer ribbon, I understand that. Two and a half hours later, he comes into my office and says, "Okay, you ready to have a meeting?" And he never has the invoices printed. He was supposed to be waiting for them to be printed, and he asked me to print all the emails. So, I waited two and a half hours for me to just, which I could have done in the very beginning, because that's what he told me to wait on. I waited two and a half hours to print out, to end up printing out the emails for him. I mailed all the invoices. You, you guys see those. I'm, every invoice I send to him, I send to you guys. So, he gets them. I said this time and time again. As I get the invoices in, I email them, so that they can be sent out. The fire department would immediately send me back within one, one hour to one day, I would get the responses back. All you have to do is look on your financial report, or in UAN, which you guys specifically had a big deal and a resolution for me to get you access to UAN. And now, nobody's using it. And you're telling me you need a fin, up-to-date financial report. First of all, the finances are not static. I'm getting bills every day. The finances are going to change every day.
Tracy, how much time?
Well, I'm not finished, I don't need to interrupt it. I'm not finished. I'm not finished. And I, and so they're not static, and so I don't, I can't keep, I don't. I'm sorry, this is a work session. This is a work session. Do not interrupt me when I'm talking.
This, you're not trustee.
Don't talk to me!
Quit acting like a trustee.
I don't care what you say. I don't care what you say.
You refused to hold any access to UAN.
I said, I don't care.
You withhold emails.
I did not refuse to give Mr. Wolf UAN access. He asked for me his password, he missed, he lost his password. He asked me to reset it. I reset it. After that, he has not told me, he has not told me anything about him not having access. He has a phone, he has an email, he's not told me till I got this email, and he said he doesn't have access.
Well, this is the same reason he has problems with his credit cards.
Mister trustee, I'm speaking. Please do not interrupt me. If he doesn't tell me, I don't know. I am dressing this email, you also got a copy of it. And also, let me continue. He said, "There was no resolution passed by the trustee to request updated financials to be supplied by the trustee and staff." I don't understand what that means. But he has access to UAN. And if he can't use UAN, then he needs to tell somebody. He, he needs a sec. I don't know how to use UAN, or I don't have access. If he lost the password, I need to hear that from him. I don't need to hear from anybody but him. This email came from him, not from trustee McLaughlin, not from trustee Mann, not from trustee McGuire. It came from Steve Wolf. He made a point to send it to Nathaniel Peterson. This issue is not a law, a legal issue. It's something where we, as elected officials, need to work out. I've given everybody that needs access to UAN currently, they have access. There's no, this all came back to the thing that if you need financials, you can get through UAN. If you can't get it through UAN, I have a phone number, I have an email, I have text message, you all contacted me on that. All you have to do is contact me and tell me that.
Have you actually sat side by side with Wolf and tried to?
I just told you, we sat a meeting two and a half hours.
It's kind of interesting, he has the same trouble with the credit cards.
That's his problem, not mine.
Those credit cards.
That's his problem.
And all his staff.
That's his problem, not mine. Well, that's your problem. Actually, it's your trustee's problem, not mine. It's your trustee's problem. Don't try to throw your, your problems onto me. You need to figure out what's wrong with that. He has the credit card, he's holding it in his hand, I've said this before. If he needs it fixed, he needs to give up the credit card so it can get, I don't have the credit card account. So, it can't be my fault, because I don't have the number or the account number. I can't do anything about it.
But you're the administrator of the credit cards.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I am not. I do not have the credit cards. I am not the administrator, I'm the administrator of the corporate account, not of each separate credit card. You don't understand what's going on, so you need to be quiet until you understand what's going on. You do not know. You're getting into something you have no idea about. So, you need to be quiet. So, again, this all boils down to, if you need UAN access, you need to ask for it. You just now told me this was dated on yesterday. I just found out yesterday. I couldn't do, I can't do nothing about this. If you don't tell me, I don't know. I'm not a mind reader. I'm done on that.
Speaking of UAN access, I sent Brian Peters, who's Buckeye Business Solutions, permission to put it on my laptop. And he says, "I do this to you, Steve." And I responded that, actually, I'm Steve's boss, why do I have to go through Steve? Why is there a holdup on me getting UAN on my personal computer, my laptop?
Okay, so, I can explain that. All purchases with any of our technology companies are now under my approval, because Chief Lutz and I were concerned about the charges and not following them. So, I approve all changes as a day-to-day manager of expenses. Installing any software on a private computer is not protected from terrorism, from viruses that you hired Buckeye to take care of. And UAN is a government software, and it says it's not permitted to be put on to private software. So, Nathaniel Peterson said that you have to pass a resolution for your particular community about what you want to do, or you don't want to do with public government software. In the last meeting, if you were not here, the trustees passed the resolution right that said that you weren't allowed to use that on private computers. And so, that was overviewed by Nathaniel Peterson. You have a policy in the township, and that is why you can't put it on your private computer, because our virus cybersecurity software, which was very important to you when you got on the board, is protecting what public equipment are issued.
So, can I take the lap, can I take my laptop home and use it then?
If you have a government laptop, it's yours yet, so.
I got a government laptop in my office, I'm taking it out of the office and taking it home.
That's why you have to buy one.
I like to see.
I might, there's a, there's a computer in my office, I can't take it home.
Well, you can.
Trustee McLaughlin, I like to see the, where it says that UAN, I don't know of any, any policy that says UAN can't be put in equipment. In fact, when Buckeye was hired, I was told personally by Steve, that Buckeye would not be touching any UAN from equipment. That was not part of the, you did tell me that, it was not part of the equipment.
Let me update that situation. They don't have the right to manipulate any UAN equipment, but who did you call to install it? Buckeye.
I did.
Buckeye is a certified vendor. Buckeye is a certified vendor to install.
They didn't set, they didn't install, they do not install UAN on a computer. Buckeye installed it for the server, because you guys want it on the server. When I got UAN, I installed it on my computer itself. When you guys want it on the server, that's when Buckeye got involved.
Okay, now, I'm going to correct you, because they went into Mike's office, they went into Roy's office, and they went into Jim's office, and they installed it physically on their computer.
Because you guys couldn't do it.
That's not the server.
Yeah, that's because you guys couldn't do it. It was not installed on my computer by Buckeye, again.
I didn't say yours.
I'm saying it again, it was not, and so your logic is not truthful.
Yes, it is.
It's not truthful.
But I'm not here to debate, can I answer the question?
Well, we're not debating, we're telling the facts, and the facts are the facts.
And it's government-issued software, and it's got to be protected by virus protection, and the Buckeye system does not protect private computers.
UAN has their own protection on the software, so it does not have to be protected by Buckeye. And you can call UAN, and if you want, I can call you in and get that written. So, that's not true.
We, as trustees, are agreed only. We're not being able to access or change anything on the software anymore. We're just looking at it.
And there can't be any viruses getting on it that way. That is correct.
Well, you weren't at the meeting to debate that, Mr. McLaughlin, and apparently you were outvoted on that issue, and we have a policy.
Well, there is a policy that, the policy also says you can get a waiver, basically, if you write a resolution.
So, because of that, we bought, is that part of the $60,000 we spent with Buckeye since first few years, buying new computers in all the offices?
I'm going to correct you on that, Chief and I talked about that this morning. $60,000 is the telephone purchase, as well as the computer sold. That's incorrect.
No, that's not. We collected all the bills from Buckeye, and we added them up, and it is Buckeye's bill, so you are incorrect.
$59,000 is changed.
And on top of that, we paid for the UAN installation, we paid for it twice already. We initially paid for an estimate, and now we're paying for them to come in and put it in. So, which, what was the estimate for? And now they come in and they put us on this bill and this bill, every time they install on somebody's computer. Somebody needs to verify those charges. And we paid a, we paid an estimate amount, $1,000 and some, and now we're paying every time they come in and do something? Something's not right.
So, Jim, you're saying that was outvoted and everything, and I understand that, but also, in the email, it states that you're using it to protect the township property. 24-second cybersecurity, protect all information of the township, and all that. But what, this hurts the fire department immensely, in that you have firemen that work for us, they use their personal computer, personal phone to get information about a fire that's going on. They need, need that access, and why, what, what, what does it hurt? You're, like, you're keeping us from being able to do our job. As a firefighter goes on, they look at a phone, and they know where to go. They don't all have township-issued phones, township-issued computers at their disposal, being a part-time employee. What does it hurt for them to be able to have access to the, I don't know the name of program the fire department uses, but that needs to be reinstated, that the fire department has access to that, because that's how they, that's how they communicate.
As of today, all firefighter operations continue on. Chief has an email as such, and he's informed his battalion chiefs, so that's been resolved.
The chief is gone. Today was his last day.
Not as of today, this morning. We took care of that, Mike.
Speaking of that, so, Jim, who's going to be the next fire chief?
I'm not over fire, Mr. McLaughlin, so you'll have to ask Mr. Mann about this.
You're not over fire, because you're the one that pulled the resolution, was getting ready to adjourn. You're the one that pulled the resolution out of your back pocket, I'll use that word in case it's a separate word. Pulled that resolution out, knocked him and knew his contract. I didn't see Ward bring that contract out, the resolution out, I saw you bring it out to do that. And I tell you, it can be bad news, if you guys take Steve Wolf and make him Public Safety Director, and put him over fire, we'll be in a bad shape.
Mr. McLaughlin, can I go back to the resolution? I have a question about email, and you're using email on your personal phone. There's not the, how many people, I think the fire department's the only one that has issued phones. So, what about anybody else who's using email on their personal phone? Is that covered under that resolution?
Jim, is that covered under the resolution? I didn't write it.
I didn't write it either, so.
So, nobody knows what that resolution really is about?
Yeah, I mean, okay, you didn't write it, so you signed it, you're the one that brought it, that talked about it. You had, you can watch the video, you, Ray, Rory brings it out, and he's stumbling You can watch the video, you watch, Ray, Rory brings it out and he's stumbling through it. You can tell he doesn't know anything about it, the way you listen to his presentation. He doesn't know anything about it, and if you have a resolution you're trying to pass, you're selling it. He didn't have to, he.
I'll approve my vote.
I, I just want to know, email on a personal phone is, is, uh, is part of the security.
You guys are devoting roughly forty-five minutes on everything you complain about Wolf.
We didn't even mention Wolf's name, now you're mentioning Wolf's name.
Disciplinary hearing.
You're wa- you're, you're mentioning Wolf's name. We were talking about Lutz and a resolution, and you bring up Wolf's name. Nobody was saying nothing.
You had, you had the chance to debate that. You weren't here. Sorry about your luck.
Okay, any more new business? I had one. So I had a copy of a, um, some kind of social media thing that came on my phone. Uh, it wasn't owned by the township, so can't get in trouble there. But it had to do with a picture of a road employee in front of a yard. It looks like it was texting on the phone. And the response was the fact that they were taking pictures. Uh, Steve Wolf, do you have those pictures?
What you sent me. But I had pictures of the, you know, I can see what I had.
The pictures that she, the pictures that were taken by the employee.
Okay, but, but.
You stated it took before and aft- you stated they took a picture before and after. Do you have those pictures?
You, you've asked me a first question. I'm gonna give you a response. Number one, all we lots are before and after pictures. I wasn't there, you wasn't there, no resident was there to know what that person was doing with that phone. But my assumption was that she took pictures of the front and, of the house and then was texting those pictures because they came in about the same time. We're trying to record everything we do, start to finish. But workers are allowed breaks twice during a workday. She could have even been using that as a break. I don't know that. She has a family of four at home, children that are home schooled. And she's working out here for you, so I don't know what she was doing. But there's no code in the book, in your handbook today, Mike, that shows that as a violation. If you wanna make a change, we'll have a meeting and we'll put something in our social media rule.
So what's, what's your issue with the picture? You think this employee needs to be written up?
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make the, 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 I did not make the post. All I did was squirting it on. Everybody's like, I'm, I'm not the one with the complaint. I'm not the one that made the picture. I didn't make the post. Somebody else did. I've worked it on, so if they show up to meeting, you are ready for me, not blindsided. I'm trying to be helpful, and all I do is get harassed about it. I was curious, why, and in, in the response from Steve, he said that the person was taking before and after pictures. And I was curious, I wanted to see a copy of the pictures. Let's, let's weigh some. Any more new business? Got anything, Jim?